We call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, April the 26th, 2016. We appreciate you joining us this evening for our council meeting. As we always do to start our meetings, I would ask that you would stand with us as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance, and then Councilman Riley Bettis will lead us in our invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the God who bless and bless one nation, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Kind and gracious heavenly Father, we're humbled by your grace and love. We give thanks for your plan of salvation. We thank you for the blessing of living in this great country, this great state, and this special city. We remember those who gave their lives that we might enjoy those God-given rights enumerated by our founding fathers. We ask your blessings on their families and those currently serving in harm's way and their families. God and direct us to make decisions that will be acceptable in your eyes. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ms. Duncan, anyone to appear in public forum this evening?
No, sir.
Without them, we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting from April the 12th, 2016. Counsel, they're contained in your packet for your review. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes. As we do from time to time, we like to set aside some time at the first of our meetings to recognize those folks who have reached a standard of service with us that is worthy of note, and this evening is one of those nights. We have a rather lengthy list of folks that have joined the city over the past, looks like dating back 20 years here, so with that, we want to do a special recognition of those people. As we always do, what we do is we recognize them with a certificate and a day off, so it's a good way for us to commend them for their service and to make an acknowledgement of their time with the city. We are certainly proud of the efforts of each and every one of them, and I think we've got a good representative group from across the city this evening. So I'm going to ask the administrator if he would please to join me here at the front of the room, and we're going to recognize some folks this evening. I'd like to read the resolution, and it states, reads as follows. Resolution recognizing and commending the City of Greer employees, and whereas the City of Greer endeavors to recognize and reward its dedicated and faithful employees, and whereas Elizabeth Adams has served in administration for five years, Edward Dimko has served in the municipal court system for five years, Josh Holtzheimer has served in the fire department for five years, Jason Johnson has served in the public services department for five years, Justin Miller has served in the recreation department for five years, Alicia Williamson has served in administration for five years, Bill Worrell has served in the recreation department for five years, Christopher Ailer has served in the police department for 10 years, Sharon Colan has served in the police department for 10 years, Ann Cunningham has served in the recreation department for 10 years, Lilian Hanley has served in the building and development standards department for 10 years, Dale Hoffman has served in the police department for 10 years, Lady Munoz has served in administration for 10 years, Hazel Poston has served in the building and development standard department for 10 years, Tara Atkins has served in the police department for 15 years, Chris Forster has served in the police department for 15 years, and Patrick Thorntonberry has served in the police department for 20 years. And whereas these employees have served in a distinguished and professional manner, now be it therefore resolved that the City Council of the City of Greer, South Carolina, in a meeting duly assembled wishes to officially recognize and commend these employees for their distinguished and dedicated service with which they have performed. Be it further resolved that the City of Greer hereby rewards these dedicated employees with a certificate of appreciation and an administrative day off with pay approved. This, the 26th day of April, 2016. Join me in giving these folks a round of applause. Thank you. Appreciate what you do. Stay up here with us for just a second. We'll gather everybody somewhere. We've got the whole front of the room. Josh Holtzheimer.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Justin Miller.
Justin. Good job. Thank you.
Alicia Williamson.
Thank you for what you did. Appreciate it.
Bill Worrell.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chris Ailer.
Thank you for what you did. Appreciate it.
Ann Cunningham.
Thank you for keeping this straight. Appreciate it.
Dale Hoffman.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Hazel Poston.
Appreciate it.
Chris Forster.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Patrick Thorntonberry.
Thank you for what you did. Appreciate it.
Just so Zoe will know her mother got called Elizabeth Adams. Give them a little more round of applause. She comes to meetings a lot. and give us an opportunity to recognize them and to have their families be a part of that in some regard sometimes, or others in their department. We are, we are a service provider, and without our employees, or without the right employees, we fall short in that regard, and so we are, we are proud of Team Greer and thankful for the opportunities that we have to recognize those folks who make us go, and that's, that's the people that, part of, some of the people that you saw this evening. Counsel, contained in your packet this evening is the departmental reports. You have that information contained in there. As always, the administrator or department head can give you any additional information you may need in regards to any of those reports, and Mr. David Seifert joins us this evening for a financial activity report.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Tonight, excuse me, we're pleased to bring to you the activity report for month ended March 31st, 2016. At that time period, we have revenues recorded of $15,404,784, with expenditures of $13,568,744. That amount is at March 31st, 11 percent under budget. Referencing the dashboards, we have a combined positive variance of $1,936,003, and that is taking a number that is compared to the cyclical revenue cycle, rather than a straight-line amortization of the revenue over, over the 12 months. For the cash balance, we have a carrying cash balance at March 31st of $10,489,153. Now, this time of year, there are typically two revenue items that, that a lot of counsel and other people are interested in. Those are our tax revenues and our business license revenue. If you'll notice on the March report, we have already exceeded our budget for the tax revenues, and we still have four months left of collections to record and receipt. On the business license line item, to date, we're at 75 percent of our budget, and if the performance this year holds out as compared to prior year, it looks like that line item will go over budget by about $200,000. So those are this two, two of our big dollar line item budgets that are looking very strong at March 31st. Moving to the hospitality fund, we have revenue recorded of $1,420,737, and that is currently 9 percent over budget for the revenue for hospitality. Then we have expenditures recorded of $932,346, and a carrying cash balance of $1,164,111. And finally, in the stormwater fund, we have revenue recorded of $588,785, with expenditures of $268,550. The stormwater fund has a carrying cash balance of $1,243,983. So we'll be happy to take any questions you may have at this time.
Counsel? As normal, Mr. Seifert will be glad to assist you with any of that information that you might have further questions on, and I'd be glad to help you with that. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Mr. Driggers, the administrator's report, please, sir.
Thank you, sir. Members of council, a couple of calendar items to remind you of, and one is a community event that will be taking place this weekend. It is our spring cleaning day, so we are encouraging city residents to, to clean out the garage, clean out the attic, clean out those storage spaces, those items that we typically would not be able to collect at Curbside, or even many of those items at our recycling center, we are able to do those at this event. It is well-attended each year. We are getting a number of inquiries from folks within the community, so we know that activity is certainly there. Folks are following up with us, asking for additional information on what they can bring and those types of, those types of questions. Using a lot of our social media to get the word out, using our media outlets here in the community as well, but want to make sure that your constituents are aware that this Saturday, the 30th, from 8:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m., we'll be at the recycling center, and we'll also have there the ability for folks to, to drop off items for shredding. These are personal items, so we're asking folks not to bring their business storage rooms out for that event, but those personal items that they would like to have shredded, we'll have the ability to do that on-site that day. And then also, our green team, a group of volunteers with, with Team Greer that are involved in our recycling program, will be on-site during that event as well, sharing information with our community about recycling efforts and ways to improve our recycling as part of that event. So again, looking forward to that this coming weekend. It's always a good turnout for us, and we're hoping that it'll be even better this year. Weather forecast looks pretty good for that day for us at this point. As a community also, the following week, we will be involved with our annual Family Fest event. That'll be taking place on May 6th and 7th. We have been meeting with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce, preparing for that. We believe that everything is positioned, ready for us to invite visitors to our downtown area, so we look forward to seeing you here in the community, as well as literally tens of thousands of folks as they come in for that event. That'll be Friday and Saturday, May 6th and 7th. And of course, we are already preparing for our Freedom Blast event that will also take place here at the park. Just for calendar purposes, please make sure that you're marking that as June 25th. Looking forward to having that festival here in the community as well. Couple of things we just want to make you aware of, some of those goodwill-type items to share. When our leadership team met yesterday, we were made aware that the, our team members from the police department, as you are aware, participate each year in an annual softball tournament, and they've been doing that event for a number of years for the purpose of raising funds that they hope that they would never need, and those funds were solely for the purpose of helping a family if there was a fallen officer. And of course, you know that we had that occur with an officer in our Greenville Police Department, Officer Jacobs, and our, our police officers and members of our, of our department that have been involved in that event for a number of years were very, very pleased that they were able to present resources, a check, to the Chief of Police of the Greenville Department that will be relayed directly to Officer Jacobs' family, proceeds of $6,000 from our softball tournaments. So we were very, very glad that we were able to do that. Our volunteers over at the police department as well, through our Citizens Academy Alumni Association, also felt very strongly that they wanted to reach out to the Greenville Department in other ways, and one of the things that they did is they completely funded for two officers from the Greenville Police Department to attend the National Citizens Academy Conference that is taking place this week, I believe. They're actually on-site this week, and so resources from our department were used for that as well. Again, those are funds that are completely raised either by our officers through their softball tournament, or through the members of the Alumni Association in fundraising efforts that they participate in as well. So very, very glad that we were able to share with our sister city next door, the city of Greenville. As we've mentioned before, we are actively working on our, the update for our comprehensive plan. We are required to do that update at the five-year point, and we are completing that process at the staff level. We are taking that to the Planning Commission, and then in short order, we'll be returning that to you for presentation and consideration for an update to that comprehensive plan. Sometimes we have events in our community that, that we're extremely proud of, and sometimes we have events in our community that saddens us greatly as well. You are probably aware that indeed in our community, we had a homicide yesterday in our community, and, but I am very pleased to report to you that the member, our investigators are actively working that case. It is an active case. We are working with our partners and other law enforcement agencies as well. I am quite confident of, of our success with that, but it is an active investigation, and, and we are working it extremely hard. So we want to make sure that we're assuring our community, as well as you, that those types of events, tragic indeed, but we have resources in place for us to address that, and, and they're working very hard on that right now. Municipal Association Annual Meeting is in Charleston this year. You will be receiving some information directly through the Municipal Association as well, as some communication from Ms. Duncan, so we do ask you to be taking a look at your calendars to determine if you plan to attend that meeting. It is July 14th through the 17th. Again, it is in Charleston this year. She'll be reaching out to you, asking for information on your attendance plans so that we can plan accordingly for that. Those are the items that I needed to make counsel aware of. This evening, I do have five items that I would like to ask counsel's consideration of in executive session. One of those is a contractual matter concerning a potential purchase of a piece of property. One is a legal, legal briefing to counsel on a potential liability issue. One is a personnel matter concerning enrollment in our South Carolina retirement system. Another personnel matter involving the city administrator, and a, the last item is also a legal issue concerning, legal advice that we would need to obtain in reference to an existing ordinance. So those are two legal, two personnel, and one contractual that I would like to ask counsel's consideration of in executive session.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, we'll move to items of old business first. First item before us this evening is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 9-2016. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of properties owned by Greer Professional Park General, P.A., located on Chandler Road Memorial Drive Extension from C-3 Highway Commercial to RM2 Residential Multifamily. Mr. Pace?
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, thank you for letting me be here tonight, but we have no new information in regards to this case. It was amended at last meeting. Also recommended that we had made error in the zoning currently of OD, but it is C-3 Highway Commercial, and will be changing upon your approval tonight to RM2 Residential Multifamily.
Entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. I recall that there were some questions of Mr. Grant that he answered in an email to counsel. Any follow-up questions in, in that regard, or any additional information needed as, as to the questions that were raised at the last meeting? Any additional comments, questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the second and final reading of Ordinance 10-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard, sir?
No additional information.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the second and final reading of Ordinance 10-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard, sir?
No additional information.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the second and final reading of Ordinance 10-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard?
No additional information, sir.
Entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Item C is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 13-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard?
No additional information, sir.
Entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the second and final reading of Ordinance 10-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard, sir?
No additional information.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel.
Thank you, sir. Next item is the second and final reading of Ordinance 10-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard, sir?
No additional information.
I'll entertain a motion to receive. Have a motion in a second. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Item C is the second and final reading of Ordinance Number 13-2016, an ordinance authorizing the conveyance of any and all interest in certain real property in the City of Greer. Mr. Driggers, any new or additional information in that regard?
No additional information, sir.
Entertain a motion to receive.
No motion.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Having completed all business, we'll move to new business, the first item of which is the pavement condition evaluation project presented by Steve Grant. Mr. Grant, the floor is yours, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Counsel. As you know, the City of Greer and many other municipalities around the country utilize a manual methodology for pavement evaluation and ratings, and while this method has worked well for many years, there are better ways of pavement management on the market. Greenville County has been using, using leading-edge technology for years to manage their extensive road network. In 2016, Greenville County has contracted with TransMap for a pavement evaluation project. They issue this type of contract every four years to evaluate their roads. TransMap is a roadway and pavement asset management company. City staff would like to utilize this same technology to more effectively manage our road network in the future. TransMap, as you can see on the picture, they utilize custom-built vans equipped with cameras, 2D and 3D lasers, and GIS mapping equipment that will ride city streets and collect pavement, pavement condition data, as well as sidewalk and storm drainage catch basin data. Deliverals will be GIS-based road distress data and a road condition score, as well as the GIS-based sidewalk and catch basin location data that we can utilize on our GIS system. Since TransMap is already in Greenville County collecting data, they could conceivably start riding our streets immediately, and we will start receiving data in two to three months. Note that they will collect data in both, on both Greenville and Spartanburg County sides of the city. The funding source will be the Greer Paving Fund. We budgeted $250,000 this year in anticipation of a $250,000 match from the Greenville County Legislative Delegation Transportation Committee. However, the CTC only agreed to match $133,197.12, leaving us unallocated funds of $116,802.88. Staff request permission to enter into a purchase order agreement with TransMap Corporation for the scope of work that should be attached in your package. The total cost is expected to be approximately $46,000, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions if there are any.
Counsel? I saw that van on the way here tonight.
Did you? It was already lurking around.
Yeah. It was already running around. That's all right. Where are they out of? It says Ohio license plate. Is that where they're located?
Yes, sir. That's where they're based.
Yeah. Others?
And you say they do it at like every four years is when they have that?
What, what, what Greenville County does and what I'd like to see us do, they, they evaluate their whole network every four years, and then they use that data and plan the next four years of pavement maintenance, and then in four years, they redo it and reorder everything based on condition. So that's kind of what I'd like to see us do.
And the amount that you said was four to six thousand?
Forty-six. Forty-six.
That's what I thought.
Forty-six.
Steve, what's the 36,000?
That's for just the pavement evaluation data only. For the other 10,000, we're getting sidewalk data and catch basin data, so we'll have a GIS layer with a, an accurate map of where all our existing sidewalks are and our catch basins.
With the, the 3D technology, are they giving you a 3D map of the road so you can see?
Yes.
And so you'll see a sidewalk that's in, how deteriorated?
Well, they won't be, the sidewalk data, they won't be giving crack data on sidewalks. That's just for pavement. The data we're getting for sidewalks is just starting endpoints, so we'll have, we'll know where the starting endpoints of all sidewalks are in the city.
Do they have the ability to give you the crack data on sidewalks?
Um, I don't, their, their cam, their lasers and all don't spread out past the, the road, but we will have a, we will have a video of the whole city in the data, so we could actually sit and watch video and of the whole, everything they map. We'll have a video of, it's a 360-degree view, I think is what they said, on the proposal. So we can actually, if you've got time, sit and watch the whole thing and, and look for distresses in our sidewalk, but that's not part of their current proposal. And I suppose we could ask for an additional cost if they sat and looked at every foot of the sidewalk and tried to give us some data on it, but that's not included in this scope. we will have a video of the whole city in the data, so we could actually sit and watch video of the whole -- everything they map. We'll have a video of -- it's a 360-degree view, I think, is what they said on the proposal. So we can actually, if you've got time, sit and watch the whole thing and look for distresses in our sidewalk, but that's not part of their current proposal. And I suppose we could ask for an additional cost if they sat and looked at every foot of the sidewalk and tried to give us some data on it. But that's not included in this scope. It's just the starting endpoints of all our sidewalks.
Are they going to do every road in the city, or just those that we're responsible?
Just those that we're responsible for. No DOT or county.
Counsel, you've heard a recommendation from staff. We'll need to take action in this regard. Do I hear a motion to receive?
Go move.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any further questions of Mr. Grant?
What about bridges? Do they look at or map or put any kind of information together about any kind of bridges we may be responsible for?
Just the pavement. The pavement surface on top of it. They wouldn't do any structural evaluation of a bridge.
If I'm not mistaken, Mr. Airwood, I think we only have two in our maintenance inventory.
I'm not sure myself.
One in Victor and one at Blue Ridge Plantation. I believe that's the only two that are in our maintenance inventory.
Others?
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item B is the approval of grant recommendations from the Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee. Mr. Seifer will bring us those recommendations.
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. The Accommodations Tax Advisory Committee met on April 5th to receive and discuss two grants that were from the state accommodations tax from the local hotels that is redistributed throughout the state. We had an amount available of $22,000 and received grant applications, one from the Greer Cultural Arts Council for $4,000, and a second from the Greer Parks and Recreation for $15,000. The first application from Greer Cultural Arts, the committee recommends to you to award the full $4,000 that will be spent on advertising outside of the community for their four productions that they will do through the next year. The second application from the Greer Parks and Recreation, again, requested $15,000. The committee recommended funding $10,125. And if you look at the verbiage in the state law, it states that these funds may be used for construction items. The difference between the request and what they are recommending for your approval is the removal of non-construction items that were included in the grant request. So you see that the total being recommended is a little over $14,000. We had $22,000 to begin with, leaving a balance of $8,000 in the fund that will roll over to next year's grant process to be distributed next year. Be happy to take any questions you may have. And I have two staff members here if you have some very specific questions about applications or any specific items related to that meeting.
Counsel, actions required. I'll entertain a motion.
Go move.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion or questions.
We only received two applications?
This year. This is the first time in, I don't know, probably about 10 years that we've had an application process. There's a threshold that we had to cross to create this accommodations committee, and we crossed that threshold last fiscal year. We created the committee, and so we're getting the word back out into the community that this process is an annual process and taking place. And we just -- we advertised through our media outlets, and we just didn't get a real high response this year, but the committee is active and committed to getting the word out, and they're excited about the future of this program.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Item C this evening is the first reading of Ordinance Number 7-2016, an ordinance adding Article 7 boarded up buildings to Chapter 14 of the City of Greer Municipal Code. Ms. Helms joins us for an explanation and overview of Ordinance 7-2016.
Thank you. This proposed ordinance that we are asking you to consider will establish guidelines for boarding of structures and will specify the materials and methods to be used, hopefully making these vacant buildings more secure from fire, theft, and illegal occupancy. The ordinance will also establish guidelines for painting the wood to match the existing structure, making it more aesthetically pleasing.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
Go move.
Motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion or questions.
So we're going to be issuing permits for them to board up house?
So that we can keep an inventory of the structures that are secured, and because more than likely, we'll have grass cases to go along with that, and it'll help us keep an inventory.
What's the definition of a vacant structure?
It's one that the owner is unable to repair at the time. Instead of it, when the power is turned off, basically, and it's not being actively listed, would be considered a vacant structure. And the purpose of the permit would also be to give us an opportunity to inspect, to make sure that it's been secured in accordance with these guidelines.
For clarification, if the building is secure, it does not have to be boarded.
That's correct.
I just -- yeah, I mean, just because it's vacant and the power's off doesn't require it to be boarded. The boarding is because it is accessible. Broken-out windows, doors broken in, those types of things. But if the building is secure?
That's correct.
Glass is intact, those -- so I just want to make sure there wasn't any misunderstanding that they -- a storefront that is secure with glass and locked doors, we would not be requiring that to be boarded. If it needs to be boarded to secure the site, then it would be required, and they would have to match the aesthetics of that to the existing building.
What's the cost for a permit?
It would be based on the what -- the number of windows, the cost of construction of securing the building. So it's really based on the number of openings that have to be boarded up and secure. But we have a lot, not a lot, but these vacant buildings that are not actively being sold or occupied or worked on, they become an opportunity for copper theft and illegal occupancy. And these are the same guidelines that the National Arson Prevention recommends as well.
So if you've got a house that has two broken windows, you're only going to be required to board those two windows?
Well, if the house is vacant, has been vacant for some time, and it's creating an issue with illegal occupancy, then we would want the entire home secure in accordance with the International Property Maintenance Code. So the cost of the materials for securing that would be, you know, the permit valuation.
So we're going to be doing the securing?
I'm sorry?
Would we be doing the securing, or that's the owner's responsibility?
We -- if the owner doesn't secure the building, we have had to board them up in the past. We could have a fire, and where the building is left open and not safe for children in the neighborhood, we have gone in and boarded those up ourselves, but then we bill the
So if the owner does it, what is the permit charge?
It's based on the number of openings. I would say anywhere between $40 to $100 is our minimum permit is $40. So we would base it on the cost of material, so it's the number of openings. It would just vary from job to job.
Can we recoup the project, the expense associated with it, if we do the work?
If we have to secure the property, we would follow the lean process. Yes, sir.
Going back to what Mr. Bettis asked, if you've got a building that's secure except for two windows, we're going to require all the openings to be boarded up, although the other openings are secure?
If they're secure, not necessarily, but what we find is they get in to the homes through the crawl space sometimes, through the back doors, back windows, but if those are secure, no, we would not require that the entire structure be boarded up. But if they're unable to make the repairs, and we have homes that have sat vacant for some time, it's best to have them, you know, boarded up and secured in accordance with the code.
Well, where does it say in the code that we have the ability to make that decision?
In the Property Maintenance Code.
Okay, so this is not?
They can be ordered to be secured and boarded up.
So that's not in what we're adopting here. It's in?
It's already in the code that we have adopted, and for an example, we had a building on Arlington Avenue that the owner was not able to have it demolished, and the judge ordered her to have it secured. So this ordinance is just to establish guidelines for how we go about securing the buildings to make sure that they're not able to pull the boards off and that it looks a little better than what we have now.
You said she wasn't able to have the building demolished. Should the building have been demolished?
Yes, sir. The building is in need of demolition. She was trying to sell the property and is currently trying to sell the property, but is under a condemnation order, and the code does allow for the building to be secured
Others?
Mr. Driggers, are there situations, if that building becomes a hazard, is any funding available through GCR, or somebody take that building down, or?
That's typically what we've used, are CDBG funds for elimination of blight, and we've been very successful with using those in the past, and we have a great relationship with GCR on getting those identified and then working with us on those.
Further discussion?
Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Counsel, in executive session this evening, we have one contractual, two legal briefings, two personnel matters to consider. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session for consideration of these matters?
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Ms. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Executive session this evening, we've considered one contractual matter, two legal matters, and two personnel matters. We've taken no action in regards to any of those matters. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes.
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 Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel, we stand adjourned.